Thank you. Okay, if you guys will join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an exciting presentation. We have, Mr. Tim Brady is going to introduce an eighth grader who won the Martin Luther King Junior essay contest, and it's Brian Beach. And I'll let you tell us all about Brian, but he is so impressive.
Well, it's my honor to introduce to you Brian Beach. He's an eighth grader at California Trail. Brian has a very active life. He's involved with basketball, track, baseball, cross-country. He also plays the cello and the piano. And on top of all that, in the winter play next week at California Trail, he has a key part in the play Showdown at the Hoedown. He will play Calvin in that. He's also a church acolyte. He's a video operator at his church as well, along with being an usher. And on top of all this, Brian's also on the honor roll. Brian submitted an essay amongst hundreds for the Martin Luther King contest. He emerged as the first-place winner. Brian shared his speech at the MLK celebration on January 15th. Everyone was inspired. This led to other speaking engagements. In fact, I think he might need an agent when this is all said and done. Brian got to speak at the NAACP banquet. He got to speak at the debut of the movie Selma at one of our local theaters. And also at California Trail at the Student Program on Diversity, in conjunction with the Coterie Theater, he gave his essay at that as well. And now to you, our Board of Education and guests. So Brian is also here with his mother Jean and Assistant Principal Carrie Ficken. So please welcome to the podium, Mr. Brian Beach.
My essay is entitled "Her." She was there, there at the dawn of time. She was the reason for the crucifixion of Jesus. She was the cause of slavery in the Americas. She was behind almost every war. She killed many Jews in the Holocaust. She even helped the spread of the Black Plague in the Middle Ages. I was there through those times as well. I just didn't spread the way that she did. I had the power to change the world for the better, but she got the best of me. She ruled over many people. I was merely a trickle of water while she was a waterfall. But then, I had my day. I was the reason that slavery no longer exists in our lives. I was the reason for the civil rights uprising. I was the reason many monarchies were overthrown. Heck, I am the reason America is here today. Yet still, she continues to dictate our lives. Why do people let her in? I have always wondered that. Nothing good has come of her, except maybe some psychology jobs. Yet really, why do people let her have so much influence? I, on the other hand, am the only one who can stop her and take her away. Still, many people hold on to her and shoo me out. You have probably done that yourself. Why don't you give me a chance? Really? What are you afraid of? We all know this world isn't perfect. So what are you going to do? I can't do anything to stop her myself, but with help from you, I can. Will you accept me into your life? About 50 years ago, a man by the name of Martin decided to accept me. He knew this world wasn't perfect, and he was most certainly right. This man had overcome her, and she was never to take residence within him again. However, she still had the tongues of many in his area. But Martin, this Martin character, had a great deal of work set before him, but he was not to let her in again because he had me on his side. Slowly, she left many of the people Martin spoke to, and I reigned their minds. Yet, some people still held on to her tightly, never wanting to let go. Many of these same people are still under her influence, and you may be one of them. Don't be alarmed, though. You can change that with my help. I have a dream, one similar to that of Martin's. It is a dream that one day, you and I will go across the world, ridding every one of her. She will no longer roam free among our minds, and when she has been eliminated from the last person penetrated by her spirit, she will perish. You and I, along with the world, can rejoice and triumph, standing on her grave. A grave marked with only a small stone, the word "fear" etched upon it. What a great thing this could be. However, this is only still a dream. Without you, nothing can change. The rest of the story remains in your hands. Will you let me in? Sincerely, Courage.
Fantastic, Brian. I feel like I need to say amen. That was very good. I'd like to pause in between our presentations and recognize a former employee of the Olathe School District, Rusty Meggs is here. Rusty is teaching at the University of St. Mary and teaching a class called Political and Ethical Structures in Education. Is your class with you? If you guys would like to stand, we'd like to thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Rusty. We miss you around here. I bet that's a great class, and thanks for pursuing higher education, guys. We also have from Troop 315, Boy Scout Troop 315, we have Stephen Parker and Keaton Moody. Would you stand up, guys? We're glad to have you here. Thanks, boys. Good job. Thank you. All right, now we have a presentation by Dr. John Lefoun on student learning at the Mill Creek Campus. John, excited to hear what you have to say.
I tell you what, if I stumble, I'm going to have Brian just come back up and read my notes.
I want to thank Dr. Barry and the board for having us come out tonight and be able to share our programming updates at Mill Creek Learning Center. Just to give you guys a little bit of history, about four years ago, with the district's support, we took back over the programming at Claire Learning Center that was being outsourced. And we were able to take that program and create something that we think was a better educational program. It was more fiscally sound, and overall, it was the right thing for kids, and we were successful in that endeavor. So, a few years later, in the spring of 2013, we started to ask whether we could do this again with the Adult Diploma Program, which was Step Up, which at the time was being run by Green Bush Resource Center. And we looked at it, and we thought, can we do the same three things this time around? Can we create a program that first and foremost is a better educational program for students? Can we make a program that's more fiscally sound? And can we also, in the process, also create some staffing efficiencies and things and improve other programming as well? And then, of course, the dream of actually moving into Mill Creek became a reality, which took it to a whole different level. So that's what I'm going to do tonight. I want to get you guys updated on all the amazing programs that we have happening out in that building. But more importantly, I think to get you to have a real feeling for what's happening out there, because it's so unique and different. What I really want you to see is the people and learn a little bit about who we're serving and get to hear some of their stories, because I think you guys will really enjoy that. And I want you to see a little bit of them, too. So we'll start off with a little video. So what we've got is, we are working in those two floors of the Mill Creek Building that you see here in the photo, and I'm going to walk you through all four of the programs that we have in operation right now. The first program is our Extended Absence Services, which you might be more familiar with the term "homebound." And this was one of the programs that we were able to create a staffing efficiency by using teachers in more than one program, both in the Extended Absence Services as well as our Step Up program and our Off-Campus Learning. If you're not familiar with it, Extended Absence Services basically serves any student that's become unable to attend school, whether it's because of a physical or mental illness. And as you can see on the screen, we serve a large number of students. Last year, Becky and her team were served over 123 students, and this year, we're well on our way to matching, if not exceeding, those numbers. And the stories of those students are, they vary greatly. You know, we talk about serving students who are battling cancer, struggling to be able to attend school because they're receiving chemotherapy or other treatments that make it dangerous to be around school for the risk of getting sick. We have students who can't attend school because they're recovering from extensive surgeries. Or we even have students who maybe struggle to attend school because of chronic pain or other illnesses or mental illness as well. We have a couple stories to share with you guys. And of course, we've changed our names to protect the identity of some of our students here. Sally is a great example of where Extended Absence does an excellent job, keeping our kids connected to school, keeping them moving forward, and with the eventual ultimate goal of getting them back to school. And Sally is one of our examples. Sally struggled with mental health, was hospitalized for an extensive period of time, receiving treatment for eating disorders, actually, if I remember correctly. And Sally was one that we were able to really work her back through the process of getting tutoring, being treated at home. But then also, what Mill Creek has provided us is a new step. We used to have kids that would be seen at home, and we had to take a big leap from being seen at home to then all of a sudden getting back to school. And Mill Creek has provided us an opportunity to have another step in the middle where we can work kids back into a school setting that's safe, that has less students around, and then we can work that progression and get them back to school. And Sally is a success story, where we were able to get her all the way back to where she's now attending full-time back at Olathe South. Now, Extended Absence has a next-door neighbor on the first floor. This is Off-Campus Learning. This was an interesting program for us. The Off-Campus Learning is a credit recovery program that we originally intended to really relieve space at SOAR, which is one of our growing alternative ed programs that's housed over in Prairie Learning Center that sits right next to Olathe Northwest. This is a program that we've watched steadily grow over the last five years as an alternative environment for students to choose to go to if they don't feel like they can be successful in the large high school setting. And so what we've done is created a lab atmosphere for these kids to come over and work on credit recovery, again, staying connected in school but giving another alternative environment for them to keep moving forward. What was interesting about Off-Campus Learning is it kind of evolved into something even more. It became another place, another opportunity for other students that weren't necessarily just attending SOAR, but attending any of our high schools. Last year, as you see on the screen, we were able to graduate 26 kids that I think otherwise would have been dropouts. OCL kind of became a last stop for them, and they got to take full control of their future, and they really made it happen. And again, we're seeing that same thing happen this year. We've already got five graduates so far this year, and those numbers, we expect to grow. One of our interesting stories about Off-Campus Learning, now, this is actually kind of funny. I spoke to Jason, it's actually his name, and I said, Jason, do you care if I share a story about you at the board meeting? And he goes, oh, yeah, do you want me to come? I'd love attention. I said, I mean, you're welcome to come, but... He wasn't able to make it tonight, but Jason's kind of one of our success stories, who he hasn't written his final chapter yet. But Jason came to OCL at the beginning of his junior year with two credits, which, as you know, puts him way, way behind. Now, we've been supporting Jason through a lot of our Alt Ed programs, but OCL has definitely been instrumental in him continuing, and as you can see on the screen now. And I'm happy to report that number is different. He's actually now eight credits away from graduating. And OCL, we're using our computer-based programs, our ed annuity, to keep the kids moving forward. It's self-pacing, and a lot of these kids... And I say there's a lot more like Jason. Mitch is another student who comes to mind. Mitch was in a very similar situation to Jason, where he didn't have a lot of credits, and he came in and worked in the mornings at OCL. He would leave OCL, he would go to work for six hours at night, and then he would come home and log back into his educational programming and work for three hours a night at home. And Mitch got his diploma last December. So he was somebody that all the kids in the room kind of went, oh, wow, if he can do it, so can we. So we're seeing some amazing things happening in that program. We'll see if I can get this program to work. We also run night school upstairs. This is another staffing efficiency that we took advantage of, where we were able to combine what we've been doing for years with night school, also with our Step Up staff that I'm going to talk about in a bit. Night School is our pay-per-credit program that services not only Olathe students, but any students in the area. We get a lot of outside district students who come in and pay to get caught up on their credits and work towards graduation. And we get a lot of stories similar, I would say we see a lot of the similar kids in OCL that we also see at night school, with it being kind of the same structure of credit recovery. This was an interesting story. We've definitely protected her name. But Annie came to us, actually from an outside district. She chose, she chose the love of a football player over finishing her education, and she eventually figured out, oh, that was kind of a dumb choice. And I don't know about her love life, but I do know she was able to come into night school. She had five credits that she needed to wrap up. You know, she had dropped out of school with only five credits left to go. She was able to finish those five credits through night school, and to my knowledge, she's actually now enrolled in junior college. So she got back on track, which I think is a common thread you're going to hear through all of these programs, is all four of these help people who maybe have gotten off-track and have now gotten back on. Our final program that we're running is really what started this whole process, which was the Step Up program that we took back under our own reins in 2013. This is a program we're really, really proud of. We served a large number of students last year, as you can see, 142 students served. This year, we were able to enroll over 170 in September, and I'm also happy to report that even since January 6th, we've enrolled an additional 50 adults who have come in to finish up their diploma. And we have some really amazing stories that I want to share with you guys. If you notice in the video, we talked about it being second chances. And I think you'll see when you hear some of the stories of our Step Up students, that they really see this as a chance sometimes to right a wrong, a chance sometimes to have even just redemption with their family. Sometimes it's just merely to take that last step that maybe they didn't take before. And before I read some of these stories, I do want to take the time before I forget, because it's going to be like one of those Oscar moments where you forget to thank your wife. I don't want to do that. So I'm going to do it right now. We have some of our amazing staff back here. Will you guys stand up so they can see what you've done? Come on, don't be shy. And I want to tell you why it's such a big deal and why I wanted you guys to see them. What we did was the equivalent of attaching some wings to our pants and flying. We really have taken something over the last two years, and it's grown exponentially just in the short period of time, and we're really proud of what we're doing. I want to tell you a little bit about the folks at Step Up. With Step Up, we enroll anything from, they're all past their graduation date. So we might have an 18-year-old that missed graduation two months earlier, and I believe last year, we graduated someone who was 68, 69 years old. So we really run the gamut. We had Ms. Erleene, who's a wonderful example. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. Ms. Erleene is a nicely young lady who's come to us, who actually attended the Mill Creek Building as a young lady back in the day, and she's come back to finish. She had some wonderful quotes, because I asked her one day, we all love Ms. Erleene. She's kind of become our friend in the building. She came in with nothing. I believe she dropped out of Olathe High School to become a mom. And I asked her, I said, why are you coming back? And you can see, these were her direct quotes. I want to finish for me. And I love this one. She said, and if I can do it, any of these young people can, too. They just need the will. Just so you know, this is not, Ms. Erleene is not in the best of health, but she walks almost every day to and from her home to that lab to come in and work. And she's going to get it done. And I don't know, we're going to have to plan an extra party when that happens. So, if we throw a real good one, I'll let you know where it's at. She's not the only one, though. I want to read some of these. We do an amazing assignment. The ladies who do all the hard work at Step Up, they're not just teachers. As you could imagine, they kind of serve this multipurpose role where they're teachers, counselors, social workers, friends. Some of these folks come in with all the best intentions, but life gets in the way. They're working, they're parents, they've got financial concerns, everything. So these ladies are on the phone, and they're saying, please, come back in, we want you to help you finish, what can we do? And they're making it happen. And last year, we graduated approximately, I think, right at 20 students, and we're hoping to shatter that number this year if we can. And here's, just to give you a little taste of some of the people we see. When they first come in, the first thing they do, they go through this orientation, and they write a story about themselves. So I've pulled a couple excerpts out of here so you can kind of get a feel for the people that we get to see there. This young lady writes, "My future now is to finish the Step Up program. I want my diploma because I just watched my brother and sister graduate. Then, as time flies, it will be my daughter's graduating. I want to also graduate because my mother never got to graduate. I don't want to be a mother that didn't graduate. For my daughters, I want a better life for them. I want my family to be proud of me." And this is another student of ours. "One step at a time, I plan to earn that diploma and continue on to finish my bachelor's degree. Education is the one thing that people cannot take away from you, and I want the respect and the salary that come with it. I may even go for an advanced degree now that the kids are older. It should be much easier for me to focus on some of my own goals. I have always had one excuse or the other to not finish college, but now I feel that I am ready. And my kids will look up to me and realize that finishing school is not only important, but necessary. It's the first step on a long road for me, and I will be putting one foot in front of the other until I get there." We've had gifted students enroll who came up credit short of graduating the previous year. We've got students who, prior to last year, one of our graduates last year had been told by people in her family that she wasn't worth it, she couldn't do it, and she came in and did it. And she's one of our proud students that we get to report. We did some follow-up, and she actually, after finishing her diploma, she went back to work, got a job working in healthcare. We have graduates who, after graduating, were able to go secure jobs at the Hilton. We've got one who became a medical assistant graduate in Kentucky and is now currently in an internship in Tennessee. We've got multiple students, one in their second semester of Johnson County Community College as an automotive tech, another one attending Southwest Missouri University Economics. We've got another one in the second semester of Longview College, pursuing a degree in social work. These were people who didn't even have their high school diploma until last May, and now their lives are moving forward probably in ways that they hadn't even imagined before the opportunity became a possibility for them. We are very excited about the program, and I think, I speak for everyone involved, that helping bring Mill Creek back to life has been nothing but a pleasure, and we look forward to the continued growth of our programs and the development and that amazing building in the heart of Olathe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lefoun. That's an inspirational presentation, if I've ever seen one. Any questions, guys, about it?
I got a couple. Are they primarily all Olathe grads or non-grads that come back?
No, we're able to enroll anyone who's a Kansas resident and pass their graduation date. I don't know the percentage, but we have students from Kansas City, Kansas, Olathe, Shawnee, they come from everywhere.
It sounds like, I don't know how the curriculum's structured, but it sounds like they can graduate at any time during the year? Once they, how do they?
We actually hold, we actually hold a graduation in May, but they can absolutely finish and have a completed transcript at any time, because it is a self-pacing program.
Self-pacing.
Dr. Lefoun, how is the program, are all the programs funded?
The enrollment numbers through Step Up have actually been able to create the entire funding for all four programs.
So it's basically self-funded?
Yes.
I believe we're scheduled in March to get a report from our construction people about the renovations and improvements of the Mill Creek Center.
I'm surprised you'd remember that, but yes, we are.
We've been, quite a number of years. But I think that's the case, is that, so talking about improvements at Mill Creek and being able to expand our programs there. So we'll be anxious to hear that report.
And then, you may not have the answer to this, but do any of our neighboring districts offer a service like this?
I think, I think the closest version, if I'm correct, I think Gardner, Kansas, might have a facility similar to ours that's still being operated by Green Bush.
Well, I want to thank you for the work you do. I think this is something our district really needs to be proud of.
And Dr. Lefoun, something you just said there, operated by Green Bush, who's a service agency that operates that, whereas we operate this ourselves internally, and we have the internal controls over it and make decisions on curriculum and teachers and staffing and where it's going to be held.
Exactly.
And I think, no, that's a big advantage for us to be able to, we took it away from Green Bush a few years back and been able to offer better programs and at a better price for the students, so that's important for us to know that we're doing this the Olathe way.
Yes.
Well, I think we have staff that really cares, and that's what makes the difference in a circumstance like this.
Absolutely.
I think this is a reflection on our community as well. We treasure students who want to finish, no matter what their bumpy journey has been like, they're worth the investment. And I, we personally, as a family, have benefited from, we called it "homebound" teaching. You call it "off-campus learning" in this presentation. My daughter missed a year and a half of school. She could have been a statistic, and now she's a junior in college and doing very well, but she had an accident and, you know, unexpected things happening. You can't attend regularly sometimes. So, you know, I think this impacts so much more than just a degree. I think it helps suicide rates, mental health issues. To be a functioning person in society, there's so much across the board that we're giving them more of a gift than just a degree. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You'll have to come and present again, you gave a good presentation.
Just don't put me after Brian.
Okay, maybe we'll have Brian come, he's your safety net. All right. So, did we mention, Dr. Barry, this beautiful piece of art up here?
It's to be still recognized.
Okay, we'll wait on that, then. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule. We welcome our friendly media members to our meeting as well. We have no idea why you're here. Let's move on ahead to the action consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything out for discussion? We have some student trips, board policy revisions for emergency safety interventions, HR reports. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve the item in the consent agenda, items 5.01 to 5.10, as presented. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Poland, second by Rick Shear, for, to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Martin, yes. Mrs. Felter, yes. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Great. Action items tonight, 6.01, Olathe Northwest High School Band Uniform Bid. Do you want to make any comments on that?
Just the obvious at this. Just the obvious, that this works us through our rotation now. We started back with picking off the first high school, and this is now number four. The next set of band uniforms that the board will consider will be for Olathe West, when we get ready to open the new school. But this does take care of the cycle of getting all of our four high schools caught up with band uniforms, for which we were behind in the cycle.
How many years had we deferred that? Two or four?
I don't remember now when we did the first one, but at least several years that we had to go past.
We'll have some happy people, won't we? Questions?
Dr. Barry, this comes out of capital outlay?
It does.
Okay. So this is not out of the general operating fund?
Correct.
Okay. And this is basically the result of local tax dollars?
Correct.
From capital outlay?
We also do get some state aid, and that's to be talked about later, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's just important for the public to understand that this is a local effort, by and large.
By and large, thank you.
Okay. I'd move to accept the bid provided by Stanberry Uniforms Incorporated for a total of $113,870.25.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Parker, second by Amy Martin. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
All right. Trade bids for Olathe West High School. Why don't we have Greg? Would you be willing to come out and talk a little bit about the trade bids? It'd be 6.01 through...
What's your...
6.07, would it be?
6.02.
Oh, two. Thank you. Thank you. 6.02 through 6.07.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have bids for Olathe West High School. Along with your agenda item, I've attached a tracking log to sort of help us sort through this work package, bid package conversation we've had on the school. We have several work packages, 51 different separate work packages, that are divided up in different bids. Tonight, we're going to discuss the bids for work packages eight, nine, and 10. Cast-in-place concrete and piers, which are the foundations and the floor slabs for the building, elevators, and site electrical. We had four bids for our concrete. There was one bid alternate that was associated with these. It's bid alternate 15A or 15B. These were two versions of the same thing. These are different ways... A standard way to reinforce a concrete slab is with structural steel, welded wire fabric. 5A is an alternate that allows us to use steel mesh fibers in the concrete in lieu of the welded wire fabric. 5B was for a polymer, fiberglass, instead. You only accept one or the other. We're recommending that we accept 15A. This is an addition of $7,600 to the bid. We feel like it's a good investment for quality. It increases our probability that we will reduce the cracks in the concrete. Concrete cracks by its nature. This reduces the cracking underneath the gym floors and underneath the polished concrete in the learning column comments. Gives us a better expectation of fewer cracks. So we're recommending that we accept a bid alternate 15A and reject bid alternates 15B. We also accepted bids for elevators. Seems like a strange time to be bidding elevators, when we don't have much of a building. Elevator cabs and elevator equipment vary in size from manufacturer to manufacturer. We need to sort of nail down early which elevator we were designing, elevator shafts and lift beams for. We received two bids. Unfortunately, the low bid from Thiessen Krupp was not a complete bid, and we ruled it as in, as unresponsive. Left us with the bid from Kone, which is one of our contractors. Site electrical is all of the electrical conduit and wiring outside of the building. This would be parking lot lighting, lighting to the fields for scoreboards, that type of lighting. We had seven bids. The only bid alternate there was bid alternate 16. This has to do with parking lot lighting. Our base bid was for halogen light fixtures. This is the standard light fixture you've seen on streets and parking lots for years. Our bid alternate was for an LED light fixture. They have about a 15-year, 15- to 20-year life expectancy for the bulb, produce a much better lighting, less maintenance, obviously. So we're recommending that we accept this add alternate of $40,000 for the LED light fixtures instead of the metal halide. Those are the three bids that we received. There is a bid alternate 13. This is for a storage building. You're going to see us reference that occasionally. It's going to take about eight or nine work packages before we have all of the components of this building, and we can make a recommendation one way or the other. This is a storage building that goes out among the athletic fields. We did receive some bids for 13... Some of those bid alternates this time, but we need the other bid packages before we can make a recommendation. That's...
Mr. Thomas, just for the benefit of the viewing audience and the audience, the reason that we are putting that as a bid alternate, the storage building, is we want to make sure that we have enough funds within budget to cover all of the construction costs for the building and all the necessary parts of the building of the high school. And if, at the end of the day, we have enough funds left out of the bond money allocated towards the high school, we would be able to build that building.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. That's our sole intent, is just to make sure that these early stages, we're being sort of conservative with our funding and what we approve, to make sure we have enough to go back and then add some of these bid alternates at the end of the bidding period.
Thank you.
Questions on the bids there?
Just one comment on the LED lighting. I know the $40,000 seems like an excess amount or amount that maybe we shouldn't spend, because we could do the halogen lighting for less than that. But the payback on these lights, from a maintenance standpoint and from a standpoint of having to change the bulbs and the life of the bulbs pays for itself. And do we know what kind of prime period it pays for?
We really don't. I can tell you that LED light fixtures also are very energy-efficient light fixtures. We did not have an energy analysis for this particular project. We have for many projects over the years. From that, you normally see LED light fixtures five to seven years to pay back their cost and energy savings. And the reason we really look at it from a maintenance point of view also is maintaining light fixtures in a parking lot are difficult. It's far more difficult than replacing... Working on a light fixture in a building. So getting a light fixture that, you know, has a long lifespan, limits the amount of maintenance, is a help also to the service center. But it's very difficult to quantify that.
So by approving the $40,000, that bid alternate, we, in the long run, we're saving operating money, which comes out of the general fund?
It does. It does.
Other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move to accept the bids and bid alternates listed in the bid summary.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Parker, second by Mike Poland, and it would be for items 6.02, 6.03, 6.04, five, six, and seven.
I was...
Right?
Ms. Pratt, I was only making a motion for 6.02.
Okay. Let's back up for 6.02. Okay. So do you... Let's just do that one, then. I thought you had addressed the light fixtures and everything as well.
I can. If you feel me to go through all of them in the vote on our group, that would be fine.
So it was on 6.02. Why don't we...
Take the vote on this motion.
Let's do this vote, and then we'll discuss everything else. Thank you. Okay. We do a roll call vote for 6.02 only. Thank you.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Okay. And so for the trade bids for the three school additions, let's talk about that. Thanks.
Last month, the board approved the bids for the majority of the construction work, the trade packages, for the additions, renovations at California Trail, Chisholm Trail, and Prairie Trail. We had two other bid packages that go along with that that we bid this month. One of them was flooring. We only received one bid on the original bid day. We thought we could do better than that, so we fell that bid and rebid again. We ended up with two bids, and, you know, we've listed the low bidder there. And then we also included bidding for the fire sprinkler system for Prairie Trails addition. These are pretty straightforward. We had three bids for that. You want me to just keep going?
Just a quick question there.
Yes.
Seem to be getting a lot of just one or two people bidding. Are people that busy?
They are. They are. We had some bids today that we accepted for the West High School. We had good bids. You know, we were happy with our numbers, but it was not as many bids as we thought we would get. I think, Mr. Poland, it's a combination of events. The recession was hard on the construction industry, and it was especially hard on the construction industry in this region. And now that it's sort of coming back, there are just not as many companies out there. And the companies don't have as many workers as they had before and aren't willing to sort of trust the recovery and hire workers. So it's sort of a tight time right now to get bidders. It's sometimes two and three, where we used to see six and seven, is what we're getting.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the 6.04, the exterior doors and windows?
6.4 is replacement of windows at 13 elementary schools. This was part of our aging facilities project. Mr. Parker, you had mentioned your energy savings. We have not. We did not have an energy survey on this project, but we've had energy surveys on glass and glazing projects many times over the years. We found that normally, windows pay for themselves in five to seven years in energy savings after you replace the windows. These are replacing windows in buildings as old as 25 years old, on up between probably... This group is probably 15 to 25-year-old buildings. It's all the exterior windows. Just to help you understand, 13 schools is more than one contractor can do in a summer. So we bid this in three separate packages. That's why you have a package 2A, 2B, and 2C. And we have separate bids in each of those categories. They were bid at 2:00, 2:30, and 3:00 on the same day, so that contractors could make their choice of whether they wanted to keep bidding in the next bid, or they had enough work to keep them busy. And we ended up with two contractors getting the three different packages. There was one bid alternate associated with this. We'll just go into it. The old steel frames we're taking out, most of them are 5 and 3/4 inches deep, thick. The standard for a new aluminum window frame is 4 inches. So you end up with this little 2-inch, or this little inch and a half gap of no paint, no finishes. There are two ways to deal with that. One is a little L-shaped angle attached to the frame that helps cover that up. The other is to use a 6-inch frame when we go back. We didn't know which was going to be the least expensive, so we bid the angle as our base bid. We bid the 6-inch frame as an alternate. The 6-inch frame's more expensive, and we're recommending that we reject that, use the metal angle on it. After we analyzed the bids, we just sort of noticed that it was far in excess of our cost estimate. So we sat down with the low bidders and went through a value engineering exercise. Value engineering's a buzzword. What it really means is cost reduction. And we found ways to reduce the cost of this by about $400,000. That gets us relatively close to our estimate. You'll see these as deduct alternates, very similar to what we did in the Technology Support Center and the Food Production Center years ago. It sort of keeps this continuity of the audit, bid documents issued, bid received, bid accepted, contract written for the bid amount, deduct change order to get the value engineering out. And we'll sign the deduct change order the same time we sign the contract.
Mr. Thomas, and what exactly is the items included in the value engineering?
We allowed the contractors longer hours. We're going to replace some of the windows during the school year, after school, before school. The original bid restricted them to just from the time school was out, in May, until school started. So we're allowing them to sort of expand their window of opportunity. We changed out, replacing some of the hollow metal, wooden hollow metal solid doors you see around like receiving areas, instead of replacing those with aluminum, which was not in our primary scope of work, wasn't in our original scope of work. We're not going to replace those now, replace those at a later date. So we were able to get closer to our estimate, which overall, for aging facilities, gets us very close, because if you remember, bulk carpet, resinous flooring, we had this winter, we're all under the estimate. So we're very close to being on our estimate.
But even though it's $2.385 million, we're going to be looking at $400,000 less than...
$400,000 in deduct change orders, more or less, as we go through value engineering.
Okay. 6.05, light fixture?
This is same thing, aging facilities, another energy management. Obviously, this is more replacing older light fixtures with newer light fixtures, produce better lighting, better energy efficiency at four buildings. While we don't get many bids in some areas, Mr. Poland, we ended up with 11 bids for light fixture replacement. Low bidder was under the estimate, and the construction managers recommending that we use them.
Those are all interior lights?
Those are all interior lights. Those are classroom lights and some corridor lighting. We have window treatment replacement bids. These are sort of parallel, run in conjunction with the window replacement. Take out the old window, put in a new window, put new window treatment up with the new window when it's installed. And then the last one is trade bids. These are the first of the bids for the other four middle school renovations, Oregon Trail, Indian Trail, Pioneer Trail, Frontier Trail. And these were the first bids. One is for site utilities, site work and utilities, the other for structural steel that we have a recommendation for bids. There was only one bid alternate, we'll mention now. There is a bid alternate for an addition at Oregon Trail, to expand their administrative space and their entry. This was not included in the original scope of the work. It was something we hoped we could have the savings to be able to do this work at Oregon Trail. It's going to take the rest of the bids before we have a number, so that we can make a final recommendation on that alternate. And we also, on that day, received concrete bids. We had some irregularities in the specifications. We had some irregularities in the bidding process. We just determined there were too many irregularities. The best thing was to do was to rewrite the specifications, to reject the bids, rewrite the specifications, reissue the drawings, and get new bids. So that... We're asking tonight to reject the concrete bids, and we'll be rebidding then.
All right.
And then...
These are all... All these projects are out of the 2013 bond, correct?
Sure.
So we have the community support... The community to thank for that, what work we're able to do in our schools, the additions, and all of the improvements that we're going to be able to see in our schools. Turner Construction being the construction manager for all of these projects?
Turner Construction is the construction manager for the middle school additions. That's who we hired there. McCollum Gordon is the construction manager for the high school. And then, if you remember, we hired Turner Construction Company to help us, as owners' representatives, manage the aging facilities projects. They're still doing some of that, but Mr. Palangi has joined our staff, is taking over much of that. So I think you'll see in the next few months, a transition from Turner to Mr. Palangi handling most of that.
Going to be a busy summer.
It is.
It's another busy summer, as busy as last summer.
Other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move to accept package 6.02 as listed in the bid summary. Sorry, I mean... I looked in two different places. And accept the bids as 6.04 as listed in the bid summary, and reject the bid alternate.
And on 6.05, to accept the bids listed in the bid summary. 6.06 to accept the bids listed in the bid summary. And 6.07 to accept the bids as listed in the bid summary and reject the cast and place concrete bids.
Second?
Great. I have a bid by Mr. Polan, second by Amy Martin for 6.03 through 6.07. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And Travis, thank you for your work. It was nice to have you on board this time. Thank you. All right, we're at the perfect spot for a comfort break. Let's come back at 7 o'clock. We have the middle school art reception going on outside and it's amazing. I encourage you to take a look. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm honored for my third month in a row. It's my trifecta month of covering for our Director of Communications. To present to you our recognitions tonight and really welcome lots of distinguished guests here this evening. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with our community partner recognition. Tonight we are recognizing the Olathe Health System. I'd like to ask Heather Schoonover from Community Development to come forward to help with this recognition. And as well, let's have the following come forward. Mike Jensen, Vice President, Marketing and External Affairs. Darren Odom, Director of Business Development. Tara Flakis, Volunteer Services Coordinator. And Brian Geary, who is the President of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. As you can imagine, I have a lot to share about the Olathe Health Systems. So bear with me, I want to share some examples and why we're recognizing them this evening. We are proud to recognize the Olathe Health System for their dedicated support to the students and programs throughout our district. For more than 60 years, the Olathe Health System has been a premier business partner expanding services to meet the growing needs of this community. Additionally, the Olathe Medical Center also supports the Olathe Public Schools Foundation with a long history of financial contributions to programs that enhance the health and well-being of our staff and students. Let me highlight a few and I will miss some you love, that they're proud of, but I want to hit on a couple of things the Olathe Health Systems is in partnership with us on. Each May, seniors who are planning for a career in the medical field are able to apply for the Olathe Medical Center scholarships. The BEAM program, Bridging Education in Medicine, provides physicians to present to our high school students on why they chose their career and the courses they took in college and how they chose their specialty. There's a School Nurse Emergency Fund that helps provide prescription eyeglasses, hearing aids, walk-in healthcare, and sports physicals for students. They are a big part of our back-to-school outreach event at the beginning of the year, checking blood pressures. And it's not just teachers as the school year gets started, it's our students and their families, making sure they're healthy and getting them good information. Multitudes of internships and job shadowing experiences for our students in our 21st Century Programs. They were a founding sponsor and something close to my heart, a critical donor to the Miracle League of Olathe, a baseball field for students with disabilities. And for nearly 30 years, and I have this T-shirt for both of my daughters, first graders have been taking field trips to the Olathe Medical Center to participate and play hospital. And it is going strong. Most recently, and just learned this week, the Olathe Medical Center has donated a first aid kit to all families at 10 of our elementary schools to be handed out at parent-teacher conferences. The Olathe Public Schools applauds the vision and support the Olathe Health System brings to our school community. Tonight, we recognize the OMC team that has been instrumental to the partnership with the Olathe Public Schools. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to recognize the Martin Luther King Jr., Celebrate Diversity Competition. If Hannah Rogers would please come forward along with her principal from Olathe North, David Morford, and our district's Athletic and Activities Director, Tim Brady, who's going to maybe bring a picture with him. Standing in for Mr. Morford is Beth Esco from Olathe North. A little shorter, there you go. Thank you, Beth. I just saw you sneak in. Hannah Rogers is a high school student at Olathe North. She recently received the top honor in the 15th Annual Celebrate Diversity Competition. Hannah won the Best of Show Award in the Celebrate Diversity Contest, sponsored by the Olathe Public Schools and the Olathe Human Relations Commission. Her entry of visual arts project beat out over 5,000 student entries submitted this year. This year's theme was diminishing fear. Hannah writes, "After hearing the story of Malala Yousafzai, I became very inspired by her. Malala is a young Pakistani girl who was shot by the Taliban for her desire for women to be able to obtain an education." A huge congratulations to Hannah and a job well done. Thank you. Hannah, do you have family here tonight that we can, can you make them stand and embarrass them and we'll clap? There they are. Thank you. Next, we'll recognize the district nominees for State Teaching Awards. A selection committee with the Olathe Public Schools has announced its nominees for the 2015 Kansas Teacher of the Year, both elementary and secondary, and the 2016 Emporia State University Master Teacher Award. We'd like to recognize three outstanding educators and ask that they please come forward with their principals, Dr. Kathy McDonald, Phil Clark, and also Dr. Eric Punswick with our high school programs. If the following would come forward, Kristy Van Gosbik, I came close, goodness gracious, with Bentonwood Elementary, she is our Kansas Teacher of the Year Elementary nominee. Ken Gandy from the Olathe Advanced Technical Center is our Kansas Teacher of the Year Secondary nominee. And Scott Seager from Olathe South High School, Emporia State University Master Teacher nominee. The Kansas Teacher of the Year Program, sponsored by the Kansas State Department of Education, identifies and recognizes excellent teachers at elementary and secondary levels. The Emporia State University Master Teacher Award honors experienced teachers who demonstrate exceptional qualities. Congratulations to these three exceptional nominees. Family or fans, who do we have in the audience with you guys tonight? Point at them, embarrass them. Thank you very much. Our next recognition, National Sample Yearbooks. Would Susan Warner from PRT, Amy Gingrich from Frontier Trail, and Melissa Erker from Santa Fe Trail Middle Schools, please come forward? These three middle school yearbook sponsors have been selected as National Sample Yearbooks by Balfour, the leading publisher of yearbooks around the world. They have been recognized and it is a huge honor to have three of our middle schools with this award. So congratulations, you guys. Great. You know my next question. Family, yearbook friends? Embarrass them, make them see, oh, there's a bunch. The next recognition tonight is the KMEA Northeast District Outstanding Middle School Music Educator 2015 Award. Would Paige Mitchum, Orchestra Teacher at Prairie Trail Middle School, and her principal, Dr. Stacey Jankovic, please come forward? Paige was nominated and selected by her peers, which is an important distinction here, as Kansas Music Educators Association Northeast District's Outstanding Middle School Music Educator for the 2014-2015 school year. Congratulations to Paige again, truly distinct honor to be nominated by the peers you work with every day. So congratulations. Paige, is there an entire row of folks that'll stand up for you here?
I'm solo tonight.
Oh! Actually, a row will just randomly stand up for you. That's what we do. Thank you. Our final recognition tonight is a surprise. We don't do this very often, so bear with us and bear with the person that we're surprising a little bit. If David Glassman, the PE teacher at Cedar Creek Elementary, would come forward and bring with him as a surprise his principal, Mr. Tim Reeves. Hey, Mr. Reeves, surprise! David Glassman, who has taught and coached in this district for 15 years, is also an Airman First Class in the United States Air Force with the 190th Air Refueling Wing in the Kansas Air National Guard. For the past two years, David has been required to serve on several military essential missions, including a five-month training deployment last year. Throughout David's service, Tim Reeves has provided incredible support and understanding, which David felt went above and beyond. As a way of saying thank you, David nominated Mr. Reeves to the Department of Defense Patriot Award. This award reflects the efforts made to support citizen warriors through a wide range of measures. So on behalf of Airman Glassman, the 190th Refueling Wing, the Kansas Air National Guard in the U.S. Air Force, please join me in congratulating Mr. Tim Reeves on receiving the Department of Defense Patriot Award. I was going to catch them while they were still standing, but David, please also take our thanks for serving our country. Mr. Reeves, do you have family? Oops, let's get a quick picture. I apologize.
I do. I have my wife.
Yay! Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to move to public comments.
Okay, as everybody's leaving, at each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that the speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff, members, or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotaped recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address.
All right, and we had Jared Ba from Olathe Northwest register to come and talk. Jared also is, he's a senior at Olathe Northwest and then at welding, a welder, I don't even know what to say, what certification you're working towards at the Advanced Tech Center. So, welcome.
Okay, so my name is Jared Ba. I live at 11305 Renee Street, Lenexa, Kansas. First off, I want to say how much I love this district. It's been one of the best rides of my life. This is my senior year and I've been in this district since kindergarten, starting out at Walnut Grove Elementary School, moving up to Pioneer Trail Middle School, and now at Olathe Northwest and Olathe Advanced Technical Center. I have taken advantage of your 21st Century Programs by being dual-enrolled in aerospace and engineering and welding technology. I am one of nine Skills USA High School State Officers out of 3,000 members in the state. I am also an Eagle Scout and Boy Scouts of America and just finished my term as Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 201. So today, I want to talk to you guys about the voting taking place on iPads in the middle schools. There are three main concerns that I have over iPads in the middle schools. The first is the cost and maintenance of iPads. The second is the negative effects after school and in the future of iPads. And the third is the airdrop feature of the iPad. So the first is the cost. If we look back to 2003, we have tried technology in schools before. Olathe Northwest, when it first opened, gave all the students the Palm M515, the Personal Digital Assistant. These devices had to be upgraded after three years due to the fact that software was not available to continue updating them. iPads are not much better. The iPad came out in 2010 and is recently now has iOS 8. But the iPad that came in 2010 cannot update to that, cannot update to iOS 8 since last year, meaning it only lasted four years before it could not be updated. And with how much these cost, I do not believe that is a wise investment, especially, I don't know where the budget, where the stance in the budget on if it was part of the bond issue or not, but in the future, looking at our state budget, there is, there was almost a $300 million deficit in the budget this year, but luckily, education did not get cut. But that could double to $600 to $700 million next year and we might not be as lucky. And I'm worried about iPads, they having to be maintained every four years, the cost getting out of hand and then having to go away from them. And on the maintenance side of it, we already struggle to keep up with the devices that we have. Over break, laptops are supposed to be reimaged and returned by the beginning of, by the beginning in January of the school. Two weeks into the beginning of school after break, we still do not have laptops back. Also, the new Student View and Parent View system is still not operational on the app for Olathe Advanced Technical Center and is down 50% of the time. So if we cannot maintain the devices we already have, how are we going to maintain a ton more devices? The second effect are the negative effects after school. A recent study came out about three days ago talking about how being on a device for more than four hours a day affects sleep habits in minors. And a quote from it is, "Increased risk of sleep, of short sleep duration, long sleep on latency, and increased sleep deficiency because of use of these devices for X more than four hours a day." I had done, earlier in this month, when I had first seen the blast board meeting about iPads coming into the middle school, I decided to do my personal experiment of how long I was on my phone. I came up over a five-day period of an average of 4.5 hours on my phone. So I'm guilty too. And I think we can agree that sleep is one of the most important things for students in schools and causing sleep deficiencies because of these devices is not something that I think we need to put on our students. The third concern that I have is a feature called airdrop on the iPads, iPads and iPhones. And right here, I will demonstrate it real quick. All a student has to do to activate airdrop is swipe up, hit right here, and they can select contacts or everybody. If you put it on everybody, right now, I can send from this device to any other device that has it on, a photo over, as long as I'm connected to the Wi-Fi. So I can send it to my phone or back and forth. And you can do this to any device as long as it's on. So this photo will now pop up on my phone and I can see it, but I can decline it. Now, why I bring up this feature is I'm concerned because students will have these all days, meaning in the locker rooms and in the restrooms. And there's a camera on this device. And you're going to allow students to also have the feature of sharing. Now, this feature can be turned off. If you go into Settings, you set a passcode for it, Administrator can set a passcode and deactivate that feature. But that does not hinder the ability of the camera, which can still be used to take pictures in a locker room or restroom. Now, I'm not against technology. I love technology and I use it a lot, especially in my aerospace engineering program and even in the welding shop. And in the future, I look to get a degree in teaching and want to teach wood shop, metal shop, and robotics. And I think technology is a wonderful tool, but that's what it is. It's a tool. There's no one-fix-all technology. And for the price of these devices, it would need to be a one-fix-all technology and it's not. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your well-thought-out and well-articulated argument. It's perfect timing because we're going to move into the iPad discussion, so we'll table this. No one has a comment, right? Do we have anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay. How about let's roll into 6.08, the Apple iPad Purchase. And Rita, do you want to make some comments and remarks?
I certainly can. I think we have presented this over the course of the last several months to you. We have gone through the process with our technology action plans, with our pilot groups that have been out there. I've got a couple of folks in the audience that have been through this TAP program. This was a decision that was made not only by those TAPs folks, but also by our middle school principals. And so I am bringing this forth as a recommendation from that consensus of that group, and that was a large group that brought this forward. At this point in time, we are still recommending that we move forward with this purchase.
Can you talk a little bit about the cost and maintenance on these? Is it out of line for, I know technology is expensive and has to be maintained no matter what device.
Yeah.
Is it out of line with iPads or?
You know, I don't, I don't know that I can stand up here today and tell you that we're going to get five years out of these iPads. I think a four-year cycle is much more realistic on the iPad, especially in a device that's in a student's hand 24 hours a day, that goes home, is mobile like this. in a student's hand 24 hours a day, that goes home, is mobile like this. That's just part of the life cycle of technology. We will certainly get as much life out of them as we possibly can, but remember that they're also going to be heavily used by students, and that's our intent. That's what we want to happen. So, the elementary iPads were leased. That was on a four-year lease. So we knew that going in, that that was going to be a turnaround in four years, and that is our intent with these devices also. Desktop machines that don't move around, we easily get five years out of those machines. In the past, due to budget cuts, we have gotten as many as six and seven years out of those machines. We like to keep them at five, just because of the nature of applications and software that comes around that you need upgrading for. You know that on your own personal devices, your own personal phones, how often you go through those. Laptops, four to five-year life cycle is about the life cycle of our laptops. That's about what we get on those. Some, due to budget cuts, we've had to get more, but we like to keep them at about five years.
And how about the airdrop? Will we disable that feature?
We can, but it is heavily used at the elementary level. That's the way the students submit documents and share documents back and forth. We can certainly disable the cameras through the MDM application that comes from Apple. We can disable the camera if that is the desire of our building principals to do so. I'm not sure that I could recommend that at this time because that is one of the features on the device, that if you're going to have students doing productions, doing videos, those kinds of things, that's one of the features that we want on these devices. I don't disagree that there can be some misuse if they're not watched carefully, but that's also part of classroom management and things that the teachers and the principals will deal with in the schools.
Dr. Berry, the situation that Jared mentioned, something like that is covered in our student conduct policies?
Absolutely.
And if a student were to do something like that, would we be able to trace the origin of a photo? Would we know if a photo like that just got dropped in the school, would we be able to identify which student posted it?
I'm not going to tell you 100% all the time that we can, but there are certainly methods that we investigate those types of things on a regular basis.
Okay.
You know, part of that is also just the relationship that we have with our students, and if we had to investigate something like that, we work with kids, and we have great kids in Olathe that'll come forward and share with us if there's a problem.
Well, I think these are legitimate concerns, but I went to a speaker last year at a KASB convention who talked quite a bit about the use of technology in education, and one of the things that he brought up that really struck me was that our kids have this technology right now, and a lot of them see it as a toy. And until schools start bringing it into the classroom and showing them alternative uses, they'll, they don't realize its potential as a tool. So I think these are really legitimate concerns that were brought up tonight. However, I do think that we, through our policies, we can, we can manage a lot of these concerns. And then also, just to be sure, the purchase of the iPads came from bond money, which was local money with a little bit of support from the state.
Yes.
But it doesn't, it's not coming out of our base aid per pupil that-
Correct.
-which is currently our crisis.
Correct.
Thank you.
Rita, can you speak a little bit to the dollar amount versus the budget? You've got 5.5 million that you're asking for, and I do see we've got another 800,000 coming in the future-
Yes.
-for some of the add-ons, but the budget was 10. How did you do so well of keeping it that far on the budget?
Well, remember that $10 million was student access across K-12.
Okay.
And by leasing the iPads at the elementary level, we were able to move that funding for that, the payment of the lease, into capital outlay. So that freed up some money out of this $10 million that we're using across the board K-12. So we still have high school yet to go. You remember, we've talked about this a couple of times, that's yet to come. So that decision hasn't been made, but really, what's really saving us was the fact that we leased those iPads at the elementary level, and that payment is coming out of capital outlay.
What's our timeframe for the high school?
We have a meeting with them this month, coming up after President's Day. I can't remember if it's that week or the next, but we're going to start meeting with those TAPs folks and hopefully have a decision by the end of this school year. With the deployment of these iPads, if it's approved tonight, with the deployment of these iPads, it stretches my staff pretty thin to get all this deployed next school year. So I don't look for us to be able to deploy anything at the high school level, at least until a year from now, the very soonest, if not in the fall of '16, just due to logistics of getting all of this rolled out. And you want to do it right. I think we have a good track record of doing this right, so we want to make sure it's done well. And with staff the way it is, we have a lot of other things going on in addition to the iPads, so we want to make sure this is done well and we have staffing to do it.
Well, you speak a little bit to the young man who talked a little bit about some of the apps are not working, and he mentioned Parent View, and again, not validating if it is or not, but rolling out, how many iPads altogether are we getting ready to roll out?
Well, this will be 8,000. Now, that's staff-
To be able to support 8,000 devices, how does that look as far as your staffing?
Fortunately, Mr. Hutchinson has assured me that we can hire some temporary help over the summer with bond money because it's part of the bond project, just like construction is. So we're going to be working with some temporary help over the summer to get this done. We think we have it all figured out, and we think we're going to be okay with this. We had hoped to have a bit more staffing. It's looking like that might not be possible, so we're going to make this work. That's another reason why we probably aren't going to be able to roll with high school real quickly. But I think we'll be fine. I can't speak to the Parent View, Student View. I want to go back. I have not heard that before. That's the first I've heard of that at OATC. We've been enrolling students online through Student View the last three weeks, and everything's been going great from what I know. So I need to go back and do some investigation. I want to look into that and see what's going on because that would be a concern for me.
Any other questions?
Mr. Baugh also mentioned the Palm Pilots.
Yeah.
And I was here and approved that vote, and recognizing that they were quickly outdated. And I think we'd all recognize that any technology that we introduce, it's going to become obsolete. So we say, "Well, we're not going to get technology because in four years it's going to be obsolete." I think that's not being, having very good foresight because what do we do four years from now? Something else, there'll be something else, and that will probably will be a part somewhat related to this generation, and there'll be a new generation, and if you don't have this generation, you'll be further behind with the next generation. So recognizing that there is some obsolescence here, and it is an expensive item, but without this investment, I don't see us moving forward in the area of technology within the district.
And people probably didn't realize how many years after we did not replace those Palm Pilots that we continued to use those. Really, it's just been two years ago that they were completely out of all of our schools. We still had elementary schools using those Palms as old as they were. So we tend to recycle and recycle just as long as we can, but you're absolutely right. Technology has a limited life cycle, and that's just one of the things that you have to accept when you get into these programs. It's, it has a short life cycle, if you consider four years a short life cycle.
If there's no more questions, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of iPads from Apple for the total of $5,442,912 as presented.
About the management, approve the purchase of the software device as well, that's-
Oh, I'm reading off the sheet, not off the screen. Okay, let me finish then. Where are we at here?
I think that recommendation works, right? Do we need more?
That was the motion.
Okay, that's the motion. What else were you concerned about?
Well, there's a second part of the motion, another $77,000. Would we want to include that in the motion?
Oh, yes. In addition, approve the purchase of devices and app management software for JAMF for $77,600.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was an honor printed copy, so thank you. So, and Harlan, you seconded the motion, right? Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Shear, second by Mr. Parker. Roll call vote, please. Joy?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
And I'm sensitive to the amount of time kids spend on technology as well, Jared. I appreciate you mentioning that, and I know we didn't dialogue about it here, but I do know in our health and PE classes, and good parents also are all echoing the message that unplug and chit-chat with friends in face-to-face, not just through technology. So we'll have to keep that message strong as we move forward, for sure. So thank you very much. All right, so our next action item is 7.01. We need to approve a meeting with, let me pull this up here, make sure I'm not missing anything, with the City of Olathe. We have a wonderful collaborative partnership, and we meet, is it quarter? It's twice a year?
This is a yearly meeting that we have with them.
Yearly meeting. Our time to host, and we are going to schedule that for Thursday, March 26th, at 6 o'clock. We are hosting, and it will be right here-
Correct.
-in this lovely boardroom. Any questions?
I move to approve Thursday, March 26th, 2015, 6:00 PM as the date and time for the special meeting with the City of Olathe.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Parker, second by Rick Shear. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
All right, 7.02, Budget Development Goals and Calendar for 2015, 2016. Dr. Berry, do you have any comments?
We just do this each early spring, if I can call it that, just to line out how it will happen. Lays it out for our public that way as well as we head toward the end of this fiscal year and prepare a budget for next year.
Great. Transparency at work. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the budget development goals and calendar for fiscal year 2015, 2016 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Shear, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay, 7.03, Legislative Focus, Timing of School Board Elections. Mrs. Martin, did you want to speak to this?
Yes. I'm the one who asked for this. I'm the district's representative at KASB, and this has been a big topic of discussion statewide. I think everyone believes that increasing voter participation is absolutely something that we need to be looking at. And I wanted to change the resolution that we adopted last year to add another thought that there are ways to increase voter participation without interrupting the election cycle. And through a little bit of research, both locally and nationwide, I found quite a bit of evidence that going to mail-in ballots accomplishes exactly that. And I don't know if our audience has them or they're available to them, but I believe it is on our board docs. Just some numbers. Locally, I think our spring elections, the average over the last 15 years has been just a little over, actually, a little under 12%. But if you look at mail-in ballots during that same time, the average is almost 43%. And those numbers are out there on the Johnson County website, if you care to look them up. But I just, I thought it was important to update this resolution to add that little piece to emphasize mail-in ballots as a good option.
And what do we do with this resolution? What's the purpose, other than posting it on our website?
We will share, if we pass this resolution, we'll share that with KASB or Iwill. They're keeping a tally. One of the things they're finding is that almost unanimously, school boards across the state are in opposition to moving the elections, and it helps them in their lobbying efforts.
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah. I think it's common knowledge that I totally disagree. If we look at the data for the last, I guess since I've been on the school board, spring elections have averaged anywhere from about 17% to 25% turnout. Fall elections during that time have averaged anywhere from 50% to 75% of voter turnout. If we look at the, you know, the data, just the Olathe data for the last mail-in ballots, I took a look at, Dr. Berry graciously gave me some data, and if you just pulled the Olathe data out of there for the last, well, since 1983, for all the mail-in bond issues that we've had, it started out in 1983 at 73%. In the last three years, the average has been 30%. I don't know if anybody who can see this, but this is the trend. It started 75% here, it's down to 30, averaged 30% the last three years. I think if we just look at the data that Olathe provides, it's obvious that if we want to get voter turnout, that if we want the same people that we go to to ask for money for all of our bond elections, and we want them to come and respond to us, that it's obvious to me that we need to have it in the fall with, on the even-numbered years when they have other elections. People say they won't be as engaged in the school board issues. The same people that are going to show up in the spring are going to show up in the fall, plus, we're going to have probably two and a half to three more times people showing up. So to me, that's engagement. I was elected by, I think Ms. Martin and I both were elected last time by, we had a mandate, I think we had 90, 95% of the vote, of 17% of the people, so 16% of the people elected us, yet we ask 100% of the taxpayers to pay for, you know, the bond election. So to me, you know, when I look at data like this, I don't understand how we can, you know, how we can recommend continuing to disenfranchise our voters because we're not encouraging them to vote. And I don't understand why we want to continue to promote a system that, you know, basically causes people to stay away from the polls. And I, you know, I obviously will not vote for this, but I think it's a travesty that we're doing this to our voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I would have to speak just on the opposite side, Mr. Poland, because it, you know, my biggest concern is that by, and you mentioned it specifically, that, you know, by going into the fall and then also running at the same time as national elections and things such as that, you know, national elections, you know, spending millions and millions of dollars out there, where the focus is from those people that are voting, and not having the opportunity for them to really take the time because life gets busy, and they're going to spend a lot more time looking at that, and they're not going to spend as much time looking at the, more of the city and the school board elections and who's responsible for that at this point. The other side of it is also, in addition to that, is in no way do I feel, and I'm very confident in this, no way do I feel comfortable bringing politics into the school board. And by going into the fall, that is my own personal fear, that all of a sudden now we're going to be running whether you're Republican or Democrat, and there's no place in the school district for that. I think that that, by leaving it in the spring, number one, while you may have fewer voters, I truly honestly believe that we have a better quality of voters because they're the ones that do come out, are the ones that are taking the time to really understand who are the public officials and who's going to represent the public officials here in Olathe versus people that just show up because they don't have time to be able to look at that. And that's, and again, I don't have any facts or figures on that, but I have seen some data representing that, that as you get a two, three-page ballot, that the millions of dollars that are being spent out there, the ones are going to get more attention. And so, you know, I very much am opposed to bringing things into the fall. I think it makes a lot of sense to keep the local elections in the spring and really spend more time. If that means doing mail-in ballots to be able to bring that up, then absolutely, that gives us an opportunity to do that. But absolutely feel very strongly that we need to keep these voting in the spring.
I support the spring election as well for a number of reasons. The second thing is, isn't it a part of the bill that it would make the elections partisan?
That's two issues.
It's a separate issue, I think, but it is being proposed right now.
But that's what we're saying in our, in our-
Resolution?
Resolution, thank you. But that, I'm not in favor of partisan elections for a school board. And was this resolution passed by KASB Delegate Assembly?
Not this particular resolution, but I do believe it aligns with our position.
Is that not the position of KASB-
Yes.
-at the delegate, the delegate assembly, that the majority of school board members in Kansas are not in favor of partisan elections and keeping the elections in the spring?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and I, I would add, I support the resolution, not in an attempt to suppress voter participation, but I believe our local, the city, the county, and school districts, which are all on the spring ballot, nonpartisan, I think it's critical that we have a platform for our unique perspectives, our unique issues, and plugging the voters in is vitally important. A mail-in ballot would be great. I think the disconnect is not because of the month the election is held in, it's because local elections, we don't have Olathe Daily News any longer that really is Olathe Daily News. And, and the news media rarely covers what's going on at the local level. And I think you see that in the voters showing up, the numbers, they're just, they're just not that interested. There's only so many soundbites we can digest a day. And I think for schools, especially the school district, the timing in April works with our school calendar, it works with when we begin negotiations with the teachers' associations. It, we are uniquely different from city and county in that the April affects us the most, I feel. The April election, if we move it, and especially if we make it partisan, it's harmful for our school district. So, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Martin, second by Rick Shear. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Poland?
Nope.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for, we have a well-functioning board that we don't always agree, but we, we are always respectful, and I love that. Okay, we're moving on to eight point oh one, future action items. We need to set the end-of-year special meeting date and time. This is a routine-
Future action items, aren't they?
These are future action. Yep.
Thank you, okay. So, we will be in the future, next month, setting that.
I guess you could handle all these and not meet next month.
Can we just blow through it? Yeah. You guys wouldn't like that a bit, would you? We're gonna be setting that date at that time officially. We've got Head Start Perform, Head Start Performance Standards, Copier Contracts, oh, that's exciting, the District Calendar, Student Trips, and Olathe North High School Grant Award, and Student Fees, Miscellaneous Charges. Did you guys have any questions on any of the future action items?
I just want to comment on the eight point one zero student fees and miscellaneous charges. This is heart rendering that we are in a position where we are going to need to increase fees. And I, and I've, I've been on, on record in the past of not supporting that, but I understand where we're at from a budgetary standpoint and from, based upon what's going on in the state. This is a difficult decision, but I would like for the staff to give us more feedback in regards to how much revenue this is going to generate, how does this compare to our expenses. We need, we need to go to the public and justify why we need to increase fees based upon, just passed a twenty thirteen bond, just passed the, the resolution for the L O B. So, the public, I think, looks at us and says, golly, we did all of these things, bond and the L O B approval, and now you're coming to us and asking for an increase in fees. We have to be able to justify this to the public. They, the public needs to understand, our parents need to understand, why we are doing this, and we just can't have a, a motion and, and approve it without giving our, our public and our, our parents some understanding of why.
John will have detailed information when he presents-
And I would think, I would like to have that as a presentation-
Absolutely.
...before the board meeting, because our, our parents and public just need to understand. And that, otherwise, they're gonna say, golly, those people just always-
And he has all that information that talks about how much it raises and why it would be considered, what neighboring districts are, what our history has been, he's-
And we, and we just, we just, we don't, we just have to give our, our public the, the background information, the financial information, the dollars and cents as to why this is necessary.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, and that, and I would say that that probably includes some of the legislative action that's been going on and, and the concerns with that, to make sure that the public does understand that, you know, this is not us. Sometimes you have to be reactive to different things that are going on, but that way it gives them a nice balance of that, John, just to make sure that we have that opportunity to speak through all of that.
Going along with that, I'd like to, I'd like to reach out to the public because as we're in a real quandary, the fact that we are participating in technology, bringing technology into our district in a, in a big way, but along with that technology comes responsibility and, and the, you know, obvious fact that some people are gonna lose them. And so, somehow, we've got to ensure the, the product that we're putting out there. So, we're in a real quandary as to how we do that insurance for that. And so, I guess I would like to reach out to the public and say, if they got some great ideas how to do this or how the people have done it, we're, we're willing to listen, and that's why it is a future action item, and we would like anybody's input on how to properly ensure the investment we've made in the technology, but do it in a way that's fair to our students and to our public.
Also, same comment in regards to increase in lunch fee and lunch, the cost of lunches. I know that's not a big item, but again, you know, our public says, golly, we did all of these things and now they're increasing the cost of our lunches, and we, that needs to be justified to our public as well as why, why that's necessary, the dollars and cents.
Mr. Parker, I'm, I intend to address that a little bit later.
Okay.
Perfect timing, then. All right, so, we received written information, the twenty fourteen Head Start Director's Report, and then let's move on to topics for discussion. Board members, you have the opportunity to bring up topics for discussion at this time. Anybody?
I have, I have one item I would like to talk about. I just returned yesterday, actually, from a few days in Washington, D.C. with a delegation from K A S B to learn a little bit more about federal issues that impact education and then visit with Congressman Yoder, Senator Moran, and staff members from Senator Roberts' office. And one of the things we talked about was the, the federal reimbursement for school lunches. And if you're following closely, you'll see that next month we'll be asked to raise the price of our meals, I think, by a nickel. And we, we have to do that because of federal law that requires that we charge the same amount as the federal reimbursement rate. And one of the things that, that I personally and the other K A S B members asked for was flexibility in this. This, this is a cost that we're passing along to our families that, that isn't necessary in our district because we're able to keep our costs at the old, at the old rate. And they were actually, they were very receptive to that thought. So, to the extent that, that program gets altered this year, I think that, you know, we might see some conversations about that because there are some districts that, that, you know, maybe aren't able to do that, but actually probably more that, that are having to, to raise that price between five and ten cents just to meet the federal requirement. In addition, we, we talked about the reauthorization of E S E A, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and it looks like there, there potentially could be some movement on this, this year. We asked for full funding of our Title I program and they, they listened but explained the budget challenges. We also talked a little bit about I D E E A and special education funding and asked them to continue increasing the percentage that the federal government's paying. I believe the law says they should pay forty percent of our excess cost in special education, and right now, we sit somewhere around seventeen percent. And, and all three of those individuals, the, the two senators and Congressman Yoder, do, I think, wish to increase that, they just, they have some realities that they're dealing with in getting it done. That's all.
It looked like a great trip. Thanks for representing us there.
We, we were very well received, yes.
Great.
Mr. Robinson, going along with what the two of them just discussed, we keep saying that we're just passing on the cost that the federal government requires us to do. I'd like a little bit more of an understanding, I guess, of what that formula is and how, you know, how it, how it comes about.
That'll be perfect for next month's discussion on the fees. I mean, they truly are mandated to us, we have no control on those, so, that'll be good. Any other discussion items? All right, Dr. Berry, it's your turn.
Well, I prepared some remarks tonight, I was gonna share about how we were following several bills, and I will still share those comments, but things changed at ten after three this afternoon. We received an email from the State Department of Education in Topeka indicating that the governor was commencing with allotments or reductions in the money we have just received this year. So, within the next thirty days, the Olathe School District will lose one million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. You know, some of the bills we were following, we, we were watching the economy and what's going on in Topeka and, and in Kansas, obviously, and hoping that nothing would happen yet this year, hoping that if it did happen at all, it would be next fall and we would have a chance to approach it through the budgeting, budgeting process that we go through. But again, today, because of the situation in Kansas, these will be an immediate cut. You saw the cameras here tonight, we had calls through Ann Cohen this afternoon, just immediately, well, what are you gonna do, what's, what's the reaction gonna be? And it's, it's way too fresh to, to know that we'd react this afternoon because, again, we didn't know the immediate cuts were coming. The, the thing we have to keep in mind is the two of the bills that we were following. One is the House Substitute for Senate Bill Four, which is to plug the big gap that Kansas has right now in, in our revenue for this year. And as a part of that, it has passed the House, and I believe it passed the Senate late today, but I don't have that confirmed. So, again, they're, they're plugging the hole so that Kansas can pay our bills and so forth. But as a part of that, they have delayed capital outlay aid to schools until later this spring, hopefully. And they've also not paid and have left in limbo the L O B student aid, the part that was increased this year. So, those are two more pieces that are unknown to us right now, as they plug the gap for February fifteenth so that they can continue with money. The other bill that we've been watching has been Senate Bill Seventy-One, which is taking how schools get state aid and talking about changing the way that that happens. And with that one, there, there is the consideration that if they implement it this spring, we would lose about two point five, seven million dollars this spring. So, obviously, the combination of those two, four million, plus what we would lose in capital outlay if it's delayed. So, the, the emails were flying this afternoon in terms of wanting to know how many of these are gonna be stacked together and what that really means, and nobody knows quite yet. We do just know that we're losing the little over one point five million. So, again, we'll continue to watch this, we've had internal talks, we'll continue to share and, and bring things back to you, but we are gonna have to address this first shortfall.
Dr. Berry?
Yes.
In regards to the current one point five, that would, we, obviously, we have a budget and obviously, we have expenses to meet, we would have to fill that gap out of reserves?
Reserves, or if there would be anything that we could shut down or cut back between now and the end of school year. There could be some options of saying, well, let's freeze budgets or let's reduce whatever some other things might be that we have a list of. I'm not hesitating, like, I don't know what some of these are, I just hesitate to share them this soon because it's not fair to those programs and, and individuals and so forth. We'll bring it out in an appropriate manner.
So, our reserves, what, nine million?
Our reserves in contingency would be just over nine million. Keep in mind, if you, you just have to look even at tonight's Treasurer's Report because it contains December thirty-first, the ending balance, and our ending balance, December thirty-first for our district in terms of cash flow was zero. When, when, the way payments come, and it's a little complicated, we rely on our cash balances for cash flow. And so, that's so important, and if we get into those a little bit, we'll have less. I, I will tell you, I am reading in some of the bills that you see, is that maybe the state will have to help districts with cash flow, I mean, that could be an answer. But helping with cash flow means getting a little bit more early, it's still the same money and so forth, but I don't know how that would work. Long answer to say, yes, we do have some reserves, they're thin, and we count on them for cash flow several times a year.
Yeah, I, I know every year on Budget Time, we always wrangle over how much to have in reserves, but here is a point in case where it's critical that we have those reserves, absolutely critical.
As the state continues to look at the shortfall the rest of the spring, that's another one that's being mentioned in Topeka, is to take reserves from the school districts and apply them so that that would be part of the, the hole that would be filled. That, again, would be dangerous to us because we're fairly thin.
Very thin.
We're very thin, okay. You know, the other thing I want to mention, a couple things quickly, I talked about the graying of our school district continues, and it's just because we have people that have reached the age where they've had wonderful careers and they decide that it's time to, to step down after thirty-five, thirty-eight, forty, forty-plus years of service to the kids in our district. But tonight in our report, you would have seen Linda Voil, longtime principal in our district, stepping down, Becky Verbus, who's done an outstanding job at Indian Trail Middle School, Dr. Stacy Yurkovich, who's been in the district a long time, principal at Prairie Trail, Susan DeGroot, a principal at Manchester Park, is retiring. So, a, a number of folks that have joined that list tonight. We now have four elementary openings and three middle school openings that we'll be interviewing for and searching for the very best. Also want to mention that since we last met, we've had the closing of the election deadline for those wishing to file for the Board of Education, and again, there's some excitement for that as we head for some elections that will currently still be held in the spring. But Rick Shear was unopposed in his filing for his seat as an incumbent, and so, we welcome you back for, for four more years, starting July first. Lieta has also filed for her position and, and has an opponent, Jim Pope, and so, again, that will be in the general election, where that will be. After four wonderful terms in sixteen years, Harlan Parker's decided not to run. Harlan serves the at-large portion of our district, and we have four individuals, and there might be some of them, I know there's some here tonight, in fact, Jill Beveridge is still here, came earlier, Robin Essex, heard, Robin, thank you for coming tonight, Scott Engie, and Elizabeth Howerton. But since we have four, that will be a primary, that will be March third, it will be narrowed to two, and those two will go on to the general election on April seventh. And then finally, Dr. Daniels, who is actually ill tonight, did not file also after, I believe, two and a half terms on the board and, and well-served, and Shannon Wickliffe has filed for that position and is unopposed, so he will also, July first, join the board. Last thing I want to mention is that there is a statewide tour, the State Department is hosting a, a tour of Kansas to listen to Kansas. Randy Watson, the new Commissioner for the State of Kansas, is leading that tour, and they will be in this boardroom on February eighteenth from one o'clock to three o'clock. We'll be putting the invitation out and encouraging people to come, it's a chance to have some input in terms of what do we want a Kansas graduate to look like, and that will give the ability for the state to work backwards so that we can put that plan into place with public schools in Kansas. So, that would be my comments tonight.
Very good. Do we need an executive session?
I need ten minutes.
Okay, and then what do we need, twenty? Twenty. Okay, so, how about let's go until eight-thirty? I'd entertain a motion.
The board adjourned executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and discussing matters relating to employer, employee negotiations, and that the board return to the regular meeting at eight-thirty o'clock in this room. Executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of individuals to be discussed and to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Parker, second by Mrs. Martin, oh, sorry, Poland, and Mrs. Martin, second. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right.